Recording in progress.
Madam Clerk, the time is 5:16 PM. I call to order this special closed session. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue in Emeryville, California. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticisms about policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts, or missions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The City is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend City Council meetings. Discrimatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate Fair Employment Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and shall not be tolerated. And please let it be reflected in the minutes that pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953. Councilmember Bouders will be participating via teleconference. His teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Here.
Councilmember Cower?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
Mayor Welsh?
Here. Councilmember Bouders, can you hear the proceedings?
Can hear you loud and clear, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful, and you have a copy of the agenda, and the agenda has been properly posted at your location and is publicly accessible?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public at your location with you?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And councilmembers, can everyone hear Councilmember Bouders loud and clear?
Yes.
Wonderful. Item three is ex parte communications. Members, are there any ex parte communications to report for this special closed session? None? Now is the time for public comment. Any members of the public that would like to make public comment on closed session items can do so now, seeing no members of the public here with us. I will now close public comment. Madam Clerk, we will take items five, um, and 5.1, 5.2, and sub-items in closed session. The time is 5:19. We are adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.
The time is 6:57 PM. We have returned from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you mind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The time is still 6:57 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:57 PM. I call to order this special meeting of the Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville. The City Council welcomes comments including criticism about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or emissions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the City Council's successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment, and is mindful that city staff regularly attend City Council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act, such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Let it reflect in the minutes pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953. Councilmember Bouders will be participating via teleconference. His teleconference location has been identified in the notice and the agenda for this meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
Mayor Welch?
Here. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion on the final agenda?
I move approval of the final agenda.
I'll second.
One moment before we go move forward. Member Bouders, can you hear the proceedings?
I can, Madam Mayor.
And you have a copy of the agenda that has been properly posted at your location and is publicly accessible?
Yes, ma'am.
And is there anyone, any members of the public at your location?
At this time, no.
And everyone can hear him, correct? Thank you. We do have a motion and second on the final agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, please review the agenda. Are there any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? No, thank you. Item five is public comment for items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to comment on an item not on the agenda can do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public wishing to comment. Public comment is now closed. Item six, oh, hello, hello? Okay, I'll just yell. Item six is action items. We'll take item 6.1. The Housing Committee's annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for calendar year 2023.
Here, we know.
The mics, mine just cut, hello, hello, mine cut off. You're hearing it?
Testing.
Hello, hello?
Madam Mayor, we can hear everything you're doing.
Hello, hello? Does that mean they can hear it?
Hello.
Stop tapping on the microphones. Wonderful. We are ready when you are.
Okay, great. Uh, my name is Martin Lung. I'm the Chair of the Housing Committee. Um, today, just want to walk through our 2023 accomplishments and give you an update on our priorities for next year. Excellent. Great, thank you. Um, so last year, uh, kind of the two major actions we took was recommending the approval of two legally required reports. The 2022 Housing Element Annual Report detailing the number of units entitled permitted and completed here in our city, and then also the Housing Successor Annual Report. Um, next slide. Um, staff also presented, and the committee also reviewed and made a number of recommendations on changes to family-friendly design regulations for the city. Um, this is more specifically, you know, response to the need for objective design standards to help streamline and provide developers more regulatory certainty, encourage people to build more family-friendly housing. There are two and three bedrooms. Um, council approved this back in November of last year. Um, we also reviewed and recommended changes to the Home Buyer Assistance Program, first-time home buyers. Um, I think staff did a really great job at doing a comparative analysis of our program versus the programs at other peer cities and counties um, to understand where there might be inconsistencies or need to modernize their program to make sure more people get access to it, and also more first-time home buyers actually utilize that program. Um, that was actually pretty recently adopted, and it's still ongoing, those changes. So we're really excited to see that move forward. Um, next slide, please. Um, I think one of the bigger accomplishments that I'm especially proud of on behalf of the committee is the selection of EAH Housing. Um, they're a north-based nonprofit developer that's very active here in Emeryville um, for a three-phase project next to Christie Park. Um, when this is done, um, this is going to provide three hundred sixty-two units of large family housing with a really significant number of two- and three-bedroom units. Um, that's very, very sorely needed here in the city and the Bay Area. Um, there's also going to be an expansion of Christie Park, as well as retail space for a nonprofit bike shop. Next slide. Um, so looking forward to next year, um, we're going to be making recommendations on future projects in the affordable housing pipeline, um, as well as policy and programs outlined in the Housing Elements, um, as well as the Housing Element, um, and Housing Bond Annual Reports and Successor Reports. Next. Um, the committee, uh, I think two months ago started talking about or discussing what our priorities are for next year. Um, so we've identified two major topics that we want to bring up for our committee's review and also for council's review. Um, the first one is ADU or accessory dwelling units. Um, this is a big part of our housing element, um, and I think we overshot our goal this year because of one project on Forty-Eighth Street. Um, so we really want to do more promote and incentivize development of ADUs. Um, and we'll be working with staff to update our regulations and policies to encourage that. Next slide. The second priority is the BMR rental guidelines, um, below market rate units, BMRs. Um, so similar to what Valerie and the staff did, um, in 2023, I think there's going to be a thorough kind of top-to-bottom review of changes um, that are needed to modernize and streamline this program to make sure it's um, in line with some of our peer cities and counties around the Bay Area. So lots going on. Um, next slide, please. Um, and we have a pretty full committee. I know today you're considering a few applications for two vacancies. We're also electing a new vice chair tomorrow. Um, but I just want to make a quick plug and thank Valerie and all the great staff we have with the city. They've been some of the most proactive staff that I have worked with. Um, and really excited to, you know, continue that partnership with you guys and with Valerie and our staff. Um, the housing element, I think, lists out a lot of very, very ambitious programs, almost a hundred. Um, so whatever resources we can bring to the table to support our staff as they continue their good work would be really, really appreciated, and I look forward to taking any questions my have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members, any questions? Thank you so much.
So much.
Item six point two, Parks and Recreation Committee Annual Report on Committee Goals.
Good evening to Mayor Welch and councilmembers. I'm Gail Donaldson, the current Chair of the Planning, the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. Next slide. The role of our committee is to receive information, get, take input, give input to the city and regarding all manner of things concerning their parks and recreation programs, making recommendations on all different aspects as outlined in the Park and Recreation Strategic Plan. Next slide. Our accomplishments for calendar year 2023. Um, we did a lot. We have gone through a lot. Um, we have improved the, made improvements to the committee function and impact by improving our communication and coordination between community services staff and the Department of Public Works by adjusting, um, when we did not have a planning commission member, we adjusted so that we could fill the committee with a a community member rather than a planning commission member, but now we're going to have a planning commissioner member, and we're very happy about that. Uh, we recommended priorities for the CIP that was passed this last year, and those priorities we're still very supportive of and want to see move forward. We opened Davenport Park, and that was pretty exciting. That was a long process because there were a lot of obstacles like underground utilities that we hadn't considered. And we had a major role in the design of that park, both the play, the play structures and the nature play area. Next slide. Uh, we reviewed and gave comments on the Christie Park expansion plan, expansion plan, excuse me. Uh, they came to us two times, and we reviewed each version and gave our comments and recommendations. We reviewed potential art installations at both the Marina and Point Emery, and gave recommendations and comments on those. We discussed coordination with agencies about installing a possibility of installing an air quality monitor at the Marina so that people can be aware of what the, you know, given the history of fires and pollution in the area, that people would have a good um, representation of what the air quality is when they take their kids out and when they go out to exercise at the Marina and in the parks. Um, we made recommendations concerning Davenport Beach deck improvements. Uh, there are, there is a really good level of use with young children at the park there now, but there's a possibility of providing more for different ages with interpretive signage, a telescope, different, different things like that. So we made some recommendations. We've also worked through staff, through Rebecca, um, with the Department of Public Works on expanding the Stanford Park fencing so that children are not running from the play area into the street, and also about adding nature elements to the park because there are some underused areas that could be put to more active use with some nature elements. We received a report on the expansion of the tree canopy study to the Marina with, after all that devastation to the trees in the Marina. And in conjunction with that, we recommended expedited replacement of the trees that came down in that Davenport Park there because those trees were a focal point of the park. They were a really important part of the nature area of the park for the kids to play on and play around, and they were appreciated. So Public Works is looking to replace those trees now, and that's moving forward. We're really happy about that. We advocated for city-led children and nature programs. One of our committee members has developed pop-ups that are going to be going to different parks. There's also a mobile recreation program in the works to get children and nature and just general recreation to different parks throughout the city. We received updates affecting, just general updates affecting the city's parks and recreation programs, and we're able to provide input to the programs, the events, and all the wonderful. Uh, we feel really lucky to have a great staff that has wonderful ideas and is keeping things going at a really high level. Next slide. Wanted to also just mention that we have some very dedicated committee members. Um, Commissioner, uh, Committee Member Weber, who I mentioned before with the pop-ups, had put together a pop-up at last year's Healthy Families and Easter Egg Event over at ECCL, and did it again at the Easter Egg and Healthy Families event last, the week before last, over at Doyle Hollis Park. And it's really great to see, especially the young kids, how engaged they get with manipulating trees and rocks and shells and pine cones and things like that. They just really find that to be neat, a good opportunity. Commissioner Brew, uh, Committee Member Brewer noted that there was a really exciting possibility for a state grant on watershed education that could apply to learning about Temescal Creek, about the Marina, about the interface between the bay and the water. Um, it was on a timeline that was definitely too short for staff to apply for the grant. So Committee Member Weber partnered with a couple of nonprofits and submitted a grant with Holy H Two O and Scientific Adventures for Girls to try to get more of these opportunities into the city. We also had representation to the Community Grants Selection Committee and the Visual Arts Selection Committee this year, and also the Community Grants, the last round of Community Grants. Um, Vice Chair Robert was on both of those, those, uh, selection committees. And also, we had representation on the Hoochon Park Naming Committee. That was me. That was the representative. Next. Our priorities for this coming, this current year are, um, we have been working also on a survey of the community that we would like to see distributed because this current Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan is about twelve years old. There have been new parks and renovations of parks. There have been a lot of, there's been a lot of new development. There's a lot of changes in the city, so we're looking at the, we're thinking that it is coming to be time to look at updating the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. And the first step we want to take is surveying the community to see what they know about our parks, um, whether they like the parks, whether there's things that they want to see, whether they have good access to the parks. So we're trying to get that together. Um, Parks and Recreation CIP projects, there were a number of things that were prioritized in the, in the CIP that we would really advocate for moving forward, and we'll do that in whatever way we can. And especially in, for me personally, the McLaughlin East Shore Park is just a huge opportunity, and we're really happy to see that Public Works is working with East Bay Regional Parks to move that forward. It's going to be a long process. It took about ten years to get Point Emery done, so this park is going to take a while with all the agency coordination. And we're really glad to see that moving forward, and we'll support that in whatever way we can. We'd like to see more children in nature, and just nature in general in the parks, where adults and children can have a place where they can commune with nature and relax and just, um, or just have exposure and a place to be that's not concrete, asphalt, and rubber. So that's, that's another priority of ours. And priority of parks as essential infrastructure in the city, really making sure that resources are devoted to parks and recreation because as we get denser and denser, it just becomes more and more important to carve out those spaces and make sure that they're working for people. We intend to continue to advocate for increased access and funding for outdoor recreation in whatever ways are available and whatever opportunities come up, to advocate for climate resilience and rewilding, which is part of the nature concepts, and equitable access to nature and to parks for everyone in the city. Right now, the parks are pretty well distributed, but there's actually a fairly low awareness among the community about parks, that a lot of people are not aware of the how many parks we have and where they are. So just making them more accessible to everyone in the city, and we'll continue to advocate for urban greening as well. Our priorities are to finalize and distribute that community parks, the Parks Community Survey, so that we would get some really good, solid information about what people would like to see in the parks, what they'd like to see in the recreation provisions. And the second highlighted priority is to advocate for those CIP priority projects and see how many of those we can get moving along, and hopefully get some of them completed in the near future. I want to thank all of our committee members, definitely thank our staff, who I think are really amazing, and we're lucky to have, and thank you, members of the City Council. Any questions?
You mentioned, um, thank you for the presentation, Gail, and your commitment to the parks. Uh, I, I really, and I'm looking at this picture of the Easter Egg Hunt, and I recall my five-year-old just had a great time with the nature play booth that was set up there, so thanks for that. Um, you mentioned the composition of the committee, and I, I know you've mentioned that the, um, you haven't had quorum at times. Uh, do you have any suggestions to, are you making any requests to the council regarding the composition, number of members that would ease the, the meeting pains that you've had?
Well, I understand, well, as I mentioned, we are having a planning commissioner member that will be joining our committee as a voting member, so that is something that had been missing for a year that made it harder to achieve quorums when someone was sick or out of town. And we have two other applicants, so we are almost at a full committee at this point.
Great, thanks.
Members, any other questions? Member Pryforce?
Outdoor, oh, is it working now? No.
No, I can hear it.
Okay, okay, got it, okay. Um, for increased access and funding for outdoor recreation, I mean, that makes sense. That's just like cornering any of us, or a corporation or foundation is like, you know, giving them some money, right? Um, but advocate for urban greening. Can you explain a little bit more for the folks who maybe eco, illiterate, um, what that means? Uh, and maybe a little bit of a deeper dive into climate resilience, rewilding, and equitable access to nature?
Um, there, parks provide a really good opportunity for climate resilience. There's opportunities to manage stormwater better. There's opportunities to provide shade and cooling for increasing heat. There's opportunities for, generally, the more trees and plants that we have out there, the more it's going to clean the air and make it easier for people to breathe, and, um, it, there are all kinds of benefits that parks provide, and that they're unique to provide in a city, especially in a dense city. It, uh, parks reduce the temperature when there's heat island effects from all the concrete and the asphalt and the different buildings and, you know, impermeable surfaces. Um, in terms of rewilding, if we are able to plant more native plants, it's not only a benefit to attract some additional species, more butterflies, more birds, support that kind of wildlife, but it's also can tend to be lower maintenance because native plants don't necessarily require the kind of shearing and taking care of, and they can deal with water fluctuations better than the plants that are often in our parks. So the rewilding is also a multiple benefit kind of a thought. Equitable access is both, um, making sure that there is nature and park space available within a walking distance to everybody in Emeryville, to, so that... within a walking distance to everybody in Emeryville, so that every family can take their children to a park. And again, I think that part of that, actually, if, the Trust Republic Land has a ParkServe map that maps out 10-minute walks from parks in every town, and Emeryville is fairly well-covered, but we want to make sure that it gets really well-covered and that we support this idea of the mobile recreation program that would bring games, bring equipment, bring just different ways of interacting to the different parks that don't necessarily have as many amenities in them now. So there's different ways that we would like to be able to make sure that everybody in Emeryville has the opportunity to enjoy parks to their fullest and to be able to do the kind of activities that they would like to do there. The urban greening, I think, is sort of folded in with the climate resilience. It could have been part of the above-bullet. Yes?
Sorry about that. A lot of us don't know some of this information, or maybe even like what plants are there or available, or how important trees are, how important those sort of things are. And so I can imagine for parents or daycare centers, if they're taking tours of parks, they necessarily may not have that knowledge, information on hand. So if there was a way to display or have some sort of informative, I don't know, a structure, I was, yeah, so that's kind of like what came across.
There's definitely ideas for interpretive signage in different areas. I mean, like I was mentioning out at Davenport Park, there's birds out there all the time. There's things that you can look at, having signage so that people know what they're looking at, or putting a telescope out there. Or in other parks, smaller kinds of signage, or even things with QR codes on so people can understand what they're, you know, if they have questions about what is that, you know, why is, why is that plant over there, that they can find out what it's about, or why does it, why is this ditch here with rocks and plants in it? Well, it's because it's a stormwater function, and it's cleaning the water for the park and cleaning the water that's running off the sidewalks and running off the streets. So there's opportunities for that. Certainly, in the design of parks, you can make sure that there are seating places where you can have outdoor classrooms. Not all our parks are laid out or big enough to do that very well, but there's enough space in the different parks around town that outdoor classrooms could actually, you know, it could, they could function as outdoor classrooms. And finally, I think that the update of the city website has a lot of those opportunities too, because right now, it's really not that easy to find information about all the parks and to know where, really where they are and what's in them and see, you know, get pictures of them. But there's also the opportunity to give information about what's going on in the parks that is attracting birds or is providing shade or is cleaning the air, or, you know, different things like that. Those are possibilities too. We would love to see that. Members, anyone else? Thank you. Thank you very much.
They will be called, do not call out from the audience, please. Public comment will be called after 6.3. Thank you. Commission on this, Commission on the, Commission, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Donahue, please. Commission on Aging Annual Report, please.
Madam Mayor Welsh, Vice Mayor, members both here and afar, it's my honor, if not my duty, to report to you the achievements, accomplishments that the Commission on Aging accomplished in '23 and the key objectives for this year. This here is our mission statement, and we, we follow this pretty much every minute of our, of our lives because being a member of the Commission on Aging, we're advocates, and this is really our marching orders right there. Next slide. On our accomplishments, the new members, the addition of the last two members has been helping, helpful in filling out the complement, let's say, of members, so that it's persisted since the COVID period, and you probably all remember how difficult we had and how you had to lower our quorum count so that we could keep our head above water. Well, now we don't have to tread water in the quorum pool anymore. We are, we are at practically at, at full complement, and there are one applicant tonight. Hopefully, that will bring us to, to the full coverage. On the actionable items from the Age Friendly Action Plan, we completed the plan in '22, and it had a variety of action items in every of the six domains. And so we're going over those action items, trying to come up with actions that we would suggest to the council that would help elevate the quality of life for seniors residing in Emeryville. And you will be hearing from this commission this year with some of those ideas. Elevating the awareness of the members, our freshman class of members really expressed the benefit of receiving presentations from a variety of staff members and other committee information. They armed them with knowledge so they could feel more appreciative of the value of these groups, as well as the individuals, adding a function, how they function and add value to our city. Likewise, this helps our discussions and actions and ideas be synchronized with what is going on in our city government. The expanded range of considerations the commission has encouraged a broad range of ideas, topics, and considerations for discussion and potential action. This is something I have wanted to have an expansion of so that we could bring up, you know, new ideas as we get new members. They come in with ideas that they live with, ideas that their neighbors live with, and that's the whole idea about getting new members. We get new ideas, and they shouldn't be restricted by an agenda that we might have on what is not allowed or allowed. So we've expanded that, those range of considerations. Now for our priorities. Next slide, please. You've noticed that I'm, I'm summarizing so that my freedom of talking endlessly can be managed, and so I'll just give you the top three. And recruitment, as has been for over a year, our membership has been centered around Watergate, we find, and we want to spread our search to Emeryville east of 80 and 580. We have enough out here at the water's edge. So we have tried to, to express that interest to all the applicants and, and to you individually when we've seen you, so that we can put out the word that we really need to have a much broader potential of, of experience and, and let's say, a personal, personal difficulty. We are fortunate to have members with disabilities, but we need members to represent that broader scope of Emeryville's demographic composition. The meaningful, meaningfully contribute, that basically identifies as, we have several members of the committee that have high-tech skills and experience, and so we solicit requests and encourage you to allow our participation with the contractor you've hired to design and implement the website improvements. After all, this was an action that the COA proposed and in detail, and therefore, I think we kind of demonstrated our very deep interest in making this achieve the goals that we personally had, and I know the city has too. So we, we ask for allowing us to participate in that. The support and social participation and inclusion. This is a kind of the important aspect about all committees and commissions, and that is, we have to develop groups that, that help our community in that area that we are responsible for. And in our case, we're, we're seniors, and we realize that with the experience that we have, having spent decades building that experience, we can probably develop our own groups of self-help, if not help beyond. So we are working at coming up with groups that will visit homebound seniors. So we're trying to help ourselves. As well as, we are looking, it's been expressed to us, the interest to have seniors with our, our experience to visit elementary and high school classes, elementary to just give them recognition that grandmas and grandpas really had some neat things that went on in their life, and they like to hear that kind of story. Whereas the seniors, or let's say the high school people are wanting to have, you know, help with, I mean, it's, it's a difficult time for seniors in, in trying to spread their wings. There's fear, there's need for experience and mentorship. And so we are working at developing a group that are willing to come to high schools and provide that to those high school students that are interested. So it's, the elder community has vast experience and skills, and we want to share it with not only our peers that need a social interaction, but also with our young people. In summation, the emotional control that COVID had on elders is showing signs of mitigating. Attendance at ESC Actions, that's the senior center, have grown appreciably. Our commission expects interest in joining Commission on Aging will increase this year and beyond. Hence, the COA has focused our recording efforts to encompass the unrepresented segments of our community. Thank you very much. And do you have any questions?
Thank you for your report. I just want to share that the, the second part, to meaningfully contribute to the improvement of the communication effort and resource assistance is defined in the communication and information domain of the Friendly Action Plan, communication and information domain. That's a long, it's a long. Essentially, essentially, when I, when I see this and the thing that I think about, that's really important in terms of my interaction with, with our, our senior Emeryville residents and workers too. We have, you know, we have senior workers, is their, their ability to inform the city of information and the ability for the city to inform them of, of relevant information. And so even though our website redesign won't be happening in terms of it being published, won't be happening for a while, definitely, every step of the way, your, your committee, your commission's input is going to be so valuable when it comes to how do we make sure that we finally, at least to this point, nailed it when it comes to how we, I believe, during our community services committee, we talked about notifications on the website, structured in a way that even non-smartphones would be able to be alerted in case something the city wanted to alert residents of who use those sort of, those sort of notifications, which are the push notifications, which are treated differently than texts. And so, yeah, so your input would be great, and, and I believe some stuff is coming up in terms of the accessibility when it comes to housing. So, you know, the, the committee, commission's input would also be, so essentially, I think every committee could benefit from just talking to you all. And so even if you all just like a communication hub, just schooling us on everything, I think would be really great.
You bring up a good point, and that is that there are lots of good ideas, not just from within this small group called the COA, but from all the commissions. And it would be great to, I probably don't use the right term, dangle ideas that, or, or concepts that are being, not necessarily implemented, but designs, ideas, so that all the commissions and committees can maybe add their two cents worth, because that's the beauty of debate, healthy debate, is that, oh, I never thought of that. And so having more voices speak out is superior to just a few. And so I, I encourage, I mean, I like the cutting-edge concepts that you mentioned, yet it, just individuals themselves can be very helpful. Okay, I, I'll zip it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now's the time for public comment. Members of the public that would like to comment on item 6.1 through 6.3 can do so now for three minutes. Madam Clark, do you have the timer ready for three minutes?
Okay, this is a Brown Act violation. You, you're on record now to, to, you're, I'm noticing you, that this is a Brown Act violation. We are allowed to speak on each agendized item, action item. 6.1, we're allowed to get, we're supposed to, we're supposed to get two minutes. 6.2, we're supposed to get two minutes. 6.3, we're supposed to get two minutes. You've just violated the California Public Records, I'm sorry, the Brown Act. The five, the four of you swore an oath to defend the Constitution of the State of California, and you've just violated the California Brown Act. So you're, you're on notice here. This is a violation. We're allowed to speak on every single agendized item for a duly noticed public meeting, and you've just violated it. Now, I wanted to speak about number one, and I wanted to speak about number two, and I wanted, but not, there's not enough time, because you violated my civil rights to speak about a public, matters of public interest at a duly agendized meeting. You violated the Brown Act. We don't pay you to violate the Brown Act. We pay you to obey the law and not to violate our civil rights. Now, I'm going to start speaking, and you're going to cut me off because I won't have enough time, because you violated my rights, my civil rights. The Housing Committee report, I note, I listened to him, and he, they said, they said nothing about the primary goal of the City of Emeryville vis-à-vis housing, and that is to increase the ratio of ownership, housing ownership over rental housing. And instead, what we've been getting for the last 10 years is pretty much nothing but rental housing. So that's, that is, goes, is counter to our general plan. So why would the Housing Committee, who's, you know, who's bailiwick is housing, not discuss and not take interest in a central provision of the general plan when it, with regards to housing? Why would they not do that? Why would you not ask them about that? Is it, am I not to believe the, the general plan where it says that we're supposed to be increasing the ratio of, of ownership housing over rental housing? Is that just hooey? Maybe. Number two, the Parks and Recreation Committee report, the, the great untalked-about subject by the presenter was, we're supposed to be getting three the presenter was, we're supposed to be getting three acres of park for every thousand new residents in Emeryville. We're supposed, that's what the ratio is supposed to be at the sunset of our general plan. Three acres for every thousand residents. Are we getting it? No, we're not even close. We're supposed to have over 50 acres of parks by the year 2029 with the sunset of our general plan, right around there, and we're not getting it. Why didn't they report on it? Why didn't you ask them?
Your comment time has lapsed.
Of course it has lapsed, because you violated.
Your comment time has lapsed. Your comment time has lapsed. Please return to your seat and do not disrupt this meeting. Item 6.4, resolution of the City Council, the City of Emeryville, appointing a planning commissioner to serve on the planning commission for a term commencing May 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2026. And we have one applicant, a Carol Johnson. Welcome.
And I'd like to thank you for considering my application for planning commission. City planning is a passion of mine. I've spent my entire adult career in service to the community as a community planner, primarily for cities, including the city of Berkeley. And currently, I've had to change and am working as a private consultant, and this has opened up the possibility for me to actually serve on my local planning commission. In the past, I've actually been facilitating the planning commission meetings, attending city council, having other night meetings that conflicted with an ability to serve on a local board and commission, and that's no longer the case. And so I'm very excited about the opportunity of sharing my skill as a city planner and my insights and lived experience with the other members of the planning commission in service of guiding the city and implementing the general plan.
Thank you. We have a series of questions that we can ask, and we can give you two minutes to respond. The first question was, do a short personal statement, and I think we've got that out of the way. Members, is there any objection to me just reading the questions and then doing, at question five, we can do follow-up questions for members? Sounds good. Madam Clerk, could you set the timer for two minutes for the applicant to respond? And so for question number two, what do you see as a role of a planning commissioner?
The role of a planning commissioner is to participate on the planning commission and be primarily engaged in the implementation and monitoring of the general plan. As may be set forth in local codes and ordinances, there may be additional roles for the planning commission, including making discretionary approvals of land use, coordinating with a review and approval of the capital improvement program, and hearing variances and other appeals that may come before the commission, all as set forth in the specific code of the jurisdiction. But above and beyond is the oversight and implementation of the general plan.
Thank you. Can we just stop and restart for the timer? Please describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
I'm aware that the general plan was adopted in 2019, and as was earlier discussed this evening, has a horizon, a planning year horizon of 2029. I have read and am familiar with the guiding principles for the general plan, and I'm generally aware of the future land use set forth. I have not studied it extensively, and that would be one of my first responsibilities if appointed to the planning commission, is to become more familiar with that document. I've also reviewed the adopted housing element, and am generally aware of all the housing programs that are incorporated into that document, as well as the distribution of the housing sites and the fair housing maps, and how that differentiates different parts of the city, and those different areas of advantage versus disadvantage, and how that should play a role in future planning decisions.
And please give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process, and please explain why.
I think that project would have to be the Emory. I lived across the street from the vacant Sherwin-Williams site as that project was being planned. At the time, I was a planner for another jurisdiction, and out of professional courtesy, I didn't engage directly in that process. However, in talking to residents of my building and my partner, we did talk informally, and I kept up to speed about what was going on in that process. And I saw what initially started as a somewhat adversarial communication between amongst the various neighborhood groups themselves, as well as the applicant, grow over time and become much more collaborative. And I think the outcome of that process is now visible. We've got a community park that is used by very diverse members of the community, the number of children, and different people that are now living in our neighborhood are a direct result of the inclusionary housing policies, the design that broke that project into more kind of manageable pieces and integrated that development into the existing street grid of Emeryville. One of the very original proposals was to basically segment that off and have it as kind of a separate, very separate planned community that wouldn't have integrated into the community. But now, it extended the street grid. We've got the Greenway Parkway that runs along this side, creates a connection for the new bike and pedestrian bridge, the dog park and the park are amenities that I use every day, and those came out of the community benefits program.
Right on time. All right, members, I will entertain questions from you all or the applicant. Any questions? Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you for applying. Are there any aspects of the city's design, planning elements, or even just living in the city where you perhaps have noticed opportunities for improvement or change?
You know, I've had the benefit of working in and visiting, you know, many different cities across the country, and the balance that Emeryville has achieved between, you know, embracing live science and that kind of development, but still maintaining the artist core, which I think is really the heart of Emeryville, has, it's a very fine dance and a delicate balance to achieve, and I think the city's done that. You know, I think that the challenges are things that are not easily overcome, and it really comes down to maintenance of infrastructure and finding the funding to keep up, keep the pace of improvements and maintenance of existing development. And that's a challenge that every city in the United States is facing right now because of our funding formulas are just outdated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Member Pryforce?
Hi, thank you for applying. On your application, it said the number six as to how long you've lived in Emeryville?
Yes, I lived in Emeryville from 2011 to 2017, and then moved back just a year ago, April 1st of last year.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for members? Ms. Johnson, do you have any closing remarks for us?
Just that it would be an honor to give back to this community that I really consider my home. It was with a great deal of reluctance that I moved away from Emeryville previously, and very much grateful for having been given the opportunity to move back to this community. And when I looked at the Bay Area when we were moving back, I didn't look anywhere else but Emeryville. I just, this place really has my heart, and it would be an honor to be able to give back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call for public comment on item 6.4. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment on item 6.4 can do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public wishing to comment, public comment is now closed. Members, I turn it to you for deliberation.
Motion to appoint Carol to the planning commission.
I second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Mayor Welsh.
Aye. Big show. Item 6.5, community advisory committee appointments. Members, we have a list of appointees for several of our committees. Their applications were provided to us prior to the meeting. I'll call in order in which they are listed. Commission on the status, or sorry, Commission on Aging applicant, Sharon Penning. Is she available? Okay. Housing Committee applicant, Brooks Jessup. Welcome. We'll give you two minutes to give us a statement of your interest of serving, and then we'll ask some follow-up questions. How's that sound?
Sounds great, thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you set the timer, please? Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name's Brooks Jessup. In my professional life, I am a public sector data scientist, working to make cities here in the Bay Area more equitable, sustainable, accessible, and just plain livable. And those same values also explain why I chose to move here to Emeryville in the first place a couple of years ago now. I was impressed by how this 1.3 square mile city has been rapidly transforming from a former industrial zone into one of the most vibrant and diverse residential communities in the region, in my opinion, known no longer for toxic factories and things like that, but rather for its amazing bike infrastructure, free transit, and, most recently, affordable housing. Once I actually started living here and experiencing this remarkable transformation for myself, I realized that I wanted to get more involved and to sort of help keep moving this forward. And so I had volunteered for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and have been serving on that committee for the past year. And it was in my capacity as a member of that committee that I had the opportunity to learn about and provide recommendations, not only on transportation topics, but also on housing-related projects and policies as well. Housing and transportation, it turns out, are closely linked. And I found redevelopment projects like the one on Christie Avenue that was mentioned earlier in the Housing Committee report to be particularly interesting and important for the city, and probably mostly because of my own experience as a resident of the Emory, which Ms. Johnson was just talking about. And I will leave it there, I don't want to take any more time.
Thank you so much. Members, any follow-up questions? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Housing Committee applicant, Michelle Thomas? Denise Orloska? Parks and Recreation Committee? Hello? You look familiar. Are you Denise?
No, I am not. Unfortunately, Denise had to leave, but she had to leave a statement for me to read, so I can read it for you, or we can enter it in for the record.
I think reading for us is fine.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, could you set the timer for two minutes, please?
As Denise Orloska, I'm applying for the community member seat on the Parks and Recreation Committee. I lived in Emeryville for over 30 years. I recently left my job of booking coordinator for the Bay Area Models Guild after 12 years of service. From 1990 to 1999, I produced the outdoor dance experience, Emeryville. This was a weekend full of free dance performances at the Marina and Christie Park. Also, we took the show to Anna Yates and the senior center. Most years, I received grants from the city for this project. Now I'm a member of the senior center and enjoying many of the recreational activities they provide. This committee seems like somewhere my administrative art and joy skills could be used. Thank you for your consideration.
Parks and Recreation Committee applicant, Sky Poindexter? All right. At this time, I'll call for public comment on item 6.5. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment on item 6.5 can do so now for two minutes.
Well, that reading into the record of the applicant was a violation of Emeryville citizens' rights to the 14th Amendment, the equal protection clause, whereby the government has to treat everyone fairly and equally under the law. A government official just read the statement from the applicant at this lectern. However, you, the City of Emeryville, the city council, has precluded us from having our comments read into the record recently. It's a new law, I don't know if it's a law, it's a new policy whereby we are not allowed to comment and have, do public comments via, you know, public speaking card, and have that be elucidated by, you know, presumably a member of, you know, this city employee, like has been done in the past. That has been stopped. So you're allowed to stop that, but you have to treat everybody fairly and equally. So that applicant just was able to get the benefit of having a city employee read her statement, but I don't get that benefit, neither do any Emeryville residents, because you have precluded that, and you have said, no, you will not read our speaker cards aloud anymore. So that's a violation of the 14th Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, the equal protection clause. Again, I pay you guys, the five of you, to obey the law. I don't pay you to violate the law, and I don't pay you to violate our civil rights. So I want you to do better. If you're going to extend that right to that applicant, you have to extend the right to all of us, the same right to all of us. You can't play favorites here. Again, better, I want better behavior out of my public servants.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Members, I turn it to you for deliberation on the appointments. We have just one where we have more applicants than spaces available. Anyone wishing to?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Bouders.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brooks Jessup to the Housing Committee and Denise Orloska to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Member Pryforce?
Yeah, before we do a motion, I'd like to make a comment, because I think that that's what it was leading to, is if we had any comments. So before we do that, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to do, because we did honorable mentions a couple of committee meetings ago, and so I wanted to do an honorable mention for Michelle Thomas. It's not often that you see a black woman entrepreneur apply to these committee positions. And so, and a mother as well. And so I was moved by her application in the sense of seeing the effort there. However, because, you know, I prefer people who are actually here and show up, and so Brooke Jessup is someone who, yeah, I appreciate you being here. And so, because as we've seen with other committees, getting people to show up and being there is really important, and so when it comes to the case for a quorum, so that is my comment. So I wanted to give that honorable mention to Michelle Thomas. Thank you.
Members, any other comments?
Are we going to be appointing any of the members that, I'm sorry, any of the applicants that didn't show up?
We can, you can, if they submit an application, they can still be considered. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Just looking at the, um, the other applicants for Commission on Aging and Parks and Recreation, where we have one vacancy on Commission on Aging and, uh, two on Parks and Rec, I'd make a motion to, uh, appoint Sharon Penning to Commission on Aging and, uh, add Sky Poindexter to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I just have a clarifying question for both you and Member Bouders. For Denise and Sky, uh, which which appointment are you looking to appoint them to? Is it going to be the term ending in June twenty twenty-four? Or appoint them to the term ending June twenty twenty-five?
I, I don't have a preference.
Probably just make it easier, make it, uh, Councilmember Bouders, did you have a preference on which term?
Well, as a point of order, Councilmember Mora is now in the process of making a substitute motion, so, before it becomes complicated, I'm just going to withdraw my motion, because he's not making a motion similar to mine, so, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Oh, I, actually, well, then I'd like to amend my motion to include Brooks Jessup on Housing and Denise Orloska on Parks and Rec.
Okay. These are to note, they, these are separate action items.
Can motion all of them at one time. They're one agenda item under six point five.
Correct. Is there any other substitute motion for any other?
While I'm at it, I'll add Michelle Thomas to Housing.
Okay.
That's the full slate.
I can second that.
Okay. We have a motion on, in a second to appoint Brooks Jessup and Michelle Thomas to the Housing Committee, with terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and for Denise Orloska and Sky Poindexter to be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Committee with terms ending June twenty twenty-five. Sounds good?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Madam, Madam Mayor, point of clarification.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I have a point of clarification, so there's no appointment being made to the Commission on Aging.
No, I, I have included that, so.
Oh, yes, sorry. No, he did include that. And Sharon Penning to the, uh, Commission on Aging, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Councilmember Bouders?
I abstain. I don't, didn't interview half these people. I'm not going to vote for this.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welsh?
Aye. Motion passes. Madam Clerk, the time is eight oh five P.M. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is eight oh five P.M. I call to order the City of Emeryville's successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in person at thirteen thirty-three Park Avenue here in Emeryville, California. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticism about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or emissions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council's successor agency, management of Emeryville's Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend City Council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act, such as statements that, uh, statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Let the minutes reflect that pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five three, Councilmember Bouders will be participating via teleconference. His teleconference location has been identified in the notice and the agenda for this meeting. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
Mayor Welsh?
Here. Member Bouders, can you hear the proceedings and have a copy of the agenda and have that agenda properly posted at your location? It is publicly accessible?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And is there anyone, uh, any member or any members of the public, uh, at this location with you?
No.
And members, everyone can hear Councilmember Bouders, correct?
Yes.
Awesome. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion on the final agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welsh?
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Member, do, members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda or items on the agenda, but not on the agenda can do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public wishing to comment, public comment is now closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Would any members like to pull an item, or would, is, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welsh?
Aye. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, the time is eight oh eight P.M. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is eight oh eight P.M. I call to order this meeting of the Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at thirteen thirty-three Park Avenue here in Emeryville, California. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticisms about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or emissions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council's successor agency, management of Emeryville's Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act, such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Let it be reflected in the minutes that pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five three, Councilmember Bouders will be participating via teleconference. His conference, teleconference location has been identified in the notice and the agenda for this meeting. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
Mayor Welsh?
Here. And Councilmember Bouders, you can confirm that you can hear the proceedings, you have a copy of the agenda. The agenda has been, uh, properly posted at your location, and that your location is publicly accessible?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Are there any members of the public there at the location with you?
No, there are none.
And members, you can all hear Councilmember Bouders, correct?
Yes.
Wonderful. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, uh, do we have a motion on the, uh, final agenda?
I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welsh?
Aye. There are no special orders of the day. Madam Clerk, uh, announcement of commission and committee vacancies.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we will be opening our, um, annual recruitment for community advisory committees, um, i- on April twelfth, with a deadline of, uh, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, and we will be making appointments at the June eighteenth special City Council meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Item six, Councilmember Special Announcements and Reports on Meetings in Attendance? Anyone? Uh, I would just like to report, I had the opportunity to, um, join, um, Black Mayors from around the nation last week in Memphis, Tennessee, is the first meeting of the Black Mayors Coalition on Crime. And there was, uh, I was the furthest west, and I believe Jacksonville, Florida was the furthest east, yes. And, um, it was, uh, very collaborative meeting, sharing different strategies that have been utilized by mayors in all different parts of the country. The most unshocking and also not shocking, um, item that came up was that all of us are pretty much dealing with the same things. There's a lot of organized crime going on throughout the nation. Sometimes the focus of whatever the items are, here, obviously, we have a lot of organized retail theft. Back east, they're seeing a lot of organized auto theft, um, and, um, some fraudulent then title development. And so, um, it was a very wonderful and collaborative meeting, and, um, yeah, that's all I have to report. So, thank you very much on that, everyone. I'd, um, yes.
I forgot to mention, um, so, I did have a meeting, uh, well, kind of, well, whatever. Well, I did join the District Attorney, Madam DA Price of Alameda County, um, along with, uh, Anton Clovid, who works, um, on, um, her reentry team, uh, to attend a Narcotics Anonymous, uh, conference. Thousands, I mean, there had to be maybe twenty, thirty thousand people, um, from throughout the Bay Area, just the Bay Area alone. And it was just really amazing to hear their stories and, um, on their path to recovery, and, uh, and it just made me think about how much, um, how, how much narcotics, drugs, or I, or even alcohol is the, uh, cheaper solution to whatever should have been the solution to them, whether it was mental health counseling, whether it was better childcare, whatever the case may be, that caused the pain in their life wherein they sought, uh, drugs as a solution. And so, um, uh, me and Fussar, we know of addicts in our families, uh, or we've been exposed to addicts. And so, um, so it was just really incredible to, uh, be with Madam DA and to listen to the stories of, uh, those who are on their r- road to, as they say, from desperation to, to passion. So, that's my way to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Item seven, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just three brief things. One, the spring bulky item pickup is happening April eighth and ninth. Please check our website for the details. There are details that, uh, people should be aware of. So, that's one. Two, the Earth Day Shoreline Cleanup is happening on April twenty-first at Shorebird Park from nine A.M. to eleven thirty A.M. Um, and again, we have information on the city's website for people. We encourage people to come out and help and be a part of that. And then lastly, via a contract with Lyft, they're going to deploy fifty-five, uh, electric docked bicycles and add three new bikes to, bike share stations in Emeryville. MTC is also part of pushing this out in a broader way, and they're holding a, uh, an e-bike launch event at nine A.M. on Tuesday, April ninth, at MacArthur Bart, and people are welcome to join for that. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. City Manager. Item eight is ex parte communications. Members, uh, please review the agenda. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Yes.
I don't know. Did our, is our conversation considered ex parte? No, right? Okay, no, they were good. Okay.
Okay. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. If any member of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda and items not on the agenda can do so now for two minutes?
So, the mayor has announced that the public is not allowed to use profanity in these chambers. W- we, the s- public commenters, are not allowed to use profanity. Although I've noticed that the, the five of you reserve the right to use profanity in these chambers and on official Twitter sites. So, I'm crying foul to that. So, uh, here's, here's how the pu- the viewing public can, can know that the, the mayor is using profanity.
Oh, that's cute.
You'll see. This is from her Twitter account, her official, uh, uh, City of Emeryville Twitter account. Says, "Good morning, friends. Several people have reached out to me concerning an article with several lies about myself and my colleagues being circulated in political spaces." That would be the Emeryville toddler, and I'm the editor of that. Today, we're going to play a game called Fuckboy Fact Check. Real quick to address these, this is from the mayor, Courtney Welsh. Mayor Welsh told me I'm a fuckboy. And, but she's preventing me from using profanity in these chambers. Councilmember Bouders as well has used the word fuck and the word shit numerous times in these chambers, and yet, w- we're not allowed to use these words, so I'm crying foul. So, I don't, I think it's u- unseemly that the mayor is calling her constituents fuckboy. It's unseemly. And I'm, I'm ready to accept an apology, and if, if I get that here and now, I'll stop letting the citizens know that you're called, that you've called me a fuckboy. So, I'll, I'll accept an apology here and now. She's too proud to do-
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Please return to your seat.
No law that says I have.
Please return to your seat. Return to your seat. You are disrupting the meeting, Mr. Donahue. I'm not going to ask you again. I have to ask you again to sit down. You are disrupting the meeting. Mr. Donahue, I'm asking you one final time. You are disrupting the meeting. Please return to your seat. Please return to your seat. Please return to this audience section. You can stand up. You can go and stand in the back, so people- Okay, you can stand up. You can stand up, but you have to be where the audience is. This is, this is, you just have to, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Donahue. Feel free to stand. Any members of the public wishing to comment? Public comment is now closed.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welsh?
Aye. No public hearings or action items. Item thirteen, Department Head Reports.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Valerie Bernardo, and I am filling in this evening for Director Smalley, who is on vacation, um, this evening. Um, this is the Community Development Director's Report for the Planning Commission actions that occurred at the March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. With one vacancy, all six members of the Commission were present. The Commission appointed Commissioner Jordan Wax to the Parks and Recreation Committee seat that is designated for a Planning Commissioner by unanimous vote. The Commission also held a study session on planning regulation changes related to certain auto-centric and personal storage land uses as directed by the City Council at the study session held on January sixteenth. The Commission provide comments and expressed general agreement with the staff's proposed implementation of the City Council's direction. A draft ordinance is scheduled to be reviewed by the Commission on April twenty-fifth and a first reading by the City Council on May twenty-first. This concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to take them back to Director Smalley upon his return from vacation.
Members, are there any questions Valerie can relate to? Director Smalley? No? All right. Thank you very much, Valerie.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, Future Agenda Items Requests from Councilmembers. Senator Carr, Vice Mayor Mora. I don't have any. Member Pryforce? No, we got, I think, yeah, I think we got everybody.
I'd like to place on the agenda item, a consideration for the return of the Pledge of Allegiance to- of Allegiance to our City Council proceedings, which I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there majority consensus to put this as a future agenda item? No. Members, are there any other future agenda item requests? No? Madam Clerk, the time is 8:22 PM. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.